I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. All council members are present. We had an amended agenda this evening that was presented. We have one additional action item. Action item H, approved resolution 2013-44, amending the lease agreement with Central Care. Anything else for you?
We have amended staff report for 7G.
Okay.
And I also have an add schedule of claims for the three others.
Okay. There were updates to what you already had in your packet.
Correct.
Anything else for the agenda? Now, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Dave. Is there a second?
Oh, second, yes.
Second by Keith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Move on to our minutes. We have two minutes in your packet this evening, one from May 29th and one from June 5th. Is there any additions, corrections, or changes to the minutes as presented? Hearing, none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Dave. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Keith. Any discussion? Call a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, abstentions. Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. At this time, it's our public open forum. Is there anybody here who wishes to address the council?
What's going on with the Getty Street storm sewer? It's been sitting for two weeks. Is it on the agenda? I've tried to get through it.
We're going to be having an update. Vicki? Vicki be given an update on the storm sewer project? So at that time, we'll be addressing the storm sewer and the project.
It was going so great, and all of a sudden she's sitting.
Yep, there's a, we'll update.
You run into a problem.
We'll update you. Thanks, Gunther. Is there any other comments? Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on then. We have no public hearings this evening. We'll move into our reports and presentations. Brian, Police Department monthly report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Activity report for May 2013. Some of the numbers we had, we had nine alarm calls, 47 assists for other agencies. We had four fifth-degree controlled substance arrests, three disorderly conducts, 13 dog complaints, eight driving after suspension or revocations, nine small amount of marijuana or possession of drug paraphernalia arrests, one felony warrant arrest, 12 harassment complaints. We did the 18 liquor license renewals, 24 matter of information, 19 medicals, six no driver's license citations issued, 19 suspicious calls, eight SEFs. And we did 256 verbal warnings. We had 12 welfare checks. So we had a total activity of 682. And compared to April, we're about the same with the traffic and our calls are, of course, up. We're getting busier and we have the renewals for the liquor license. So, and then we also did 12 hours of TZD hours out there, so.
I'm sorry, Brian, 12 hours of what?
It's not called Safe and Sober anymore. It's called TZD. It's Towards Zero Death.
Okay.
That's what it's called now.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian in regards to the Police Department monthly report?
All the harassment, the 12 harassments you have, what are, what do those, what do they?
They can, they can range from neighborhood disputes or, you know, just a civil issue or a lot of them are texts. It could be like text message harassment. So a lot of stuff gets thrown into that category too as far as harassment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Move on to the procedural requirement, hazardous buildings act. Tom, City Attorney report here.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Probably a little background before we talk about some of these hazardous buildings. Over the years, I've been working with Sarah in an attempt to address some of these problems and we've been kind of trying to use the nuisance ordinances in order to accomplish that. Quite honestly, I don't think we've been very successful. And I think a couple of reasons. I don't think the courts are real interested in dealing with these types of cases. I think the administrative process that's used is not very effective. We've been able to collect some fines, but they don't remedy the situation. I mean, they pay you some money and then all of a sudden you don't hear from them. And the piles of junk get moved from the front of the building to the side of the building or under a blue tarp and then they, you know, that's considered remedial action on their part. And so we haven't been real successful. So I've had an opportunity to meet with the mayor and the city administrator, city planner a few days ago, and we discussed the possibility of becoming a little bit more aggressive maybe with some of these properties in town. I don't know if that's the right term, but to identify these properties and then try to take some actions. And with your help and with the authorities that are provided under Minnesota statutes, I think that can be accomplished. So we thought the first thing we should do is identify the problems and the properties. And we had a pretty good list because of several of the complaints been, that's been received by Sarah and basically citizens, interested citizens, and in many cases neighbors. So these properties have been identified. I suggested that perhaps we, we start by securing the buildings that are unsecured, that are vacant. And a couple of reasons for doing that. One, obviously, is to secure the building and hopefully prevent some sort of a mishap from happening. They're not safe structures when they're open. Glass is broken. You know, children can enter. There's all kinds of possible problems with that. And I think by doing that, we'll, we'll send a message to the community that we're serious about this. So we're going to start by, by doing that. And actually, this is underway. We've had Chief Fredericks go out. He's done a little investigation and kind of a windshield-type investigation, not real intrusive in terms of going into properties too much, but taking some pictures, looking mainly for windows that are out, doors that are open, and holes in the foundations and things of that nature. And there is a Minnesota statute there that authorizes the city to do this. So we've identified those properties. City administrator has prepared a resolution, I believe, for action this evening. And then there's some specific reports relating to each property. So we have some specific information. As part of the process, once the resolution is issued and the reports are available, we are going to mail these to the affected property owners. And a part of the notice to them is a description of the work that needs to be performed. It gives them six days in which to respond to us, either how they're going to do the work, or I suppose if they ignore us, then that pretty much by default will allow us to do the work. And either you do that as the city or you can contract with someone to do that on your behalf. So like I said, the notice gives them six days to either get it done, tell us how they're going to do it, and give us a reasonable timeframe to get it done. And then the last thing the notice provides is it's an opportunity for them to have a hearing in front of you if they wish to object to the city's action and/or the resolution. Couple of things to remember when we're doing this particular process, the securing of the vacant buildings, or as we move on to the hazardous building, possible demolition, demolition and/or repairs of hazardous buildings. We have some requirements, constitutional requirements, that we're going to have to comply with. Fourth and 14th amendments, there are property rights involved here. Private property, you know, we can do some things by going on somebody's residence and shoveling their sidewalk, but we're actually within the right of way. Once we move beyond that, we have to be a little bit more careful. And as an officer of the court, I feel that we need to, to make sure we bend over backwards to provide due process. And when you're looking at due process, generally, you're looking at a couple of things. And the first is notice, and the second is the opportunity to be heard. So each step of the process, and it's going to take a long time because you guys only meet every couple of weeks or whatever, but we're going to have to continually provide notices to these people. We're going to have to continually remind them that they can come and talk to us if they choose to do so. They may not want to, but they get the opportunity to do that. And then after a certain reasonable period of time, then we can act, but we have to afford them all of these opportunities and these notices. Incidentally, when the first set of notices is sent out, I would, I think the city administrator is going to do that, and I would, I would just request that, I know we're going to do it by certified mail, and I think I would also, what I usually do is when I send a certified mailing, I usually also send it by first class, same day. And the reason I do that is some people don't pick up certified mail for whatever reason. But if you send the first class to the address and that doesn't come back, then chances are you've got the right address and they've received notice. So we'd do it both ways. And then we'll, we'll try to do like an affidavit of mailing. So the big thing is I read the materials from the state is documentation, due diligence, notice, opportunity to be heard, and all those sort of things, so that we're going to have to go through that. Now, once the vacant buildings are secured, then it's my understanding we're going to move on and we're going to try to declare some of these buildings to be hazardous buildings and/or properties. And again, Minnesota statute provides the council with the authority to do that. And I've kind of put together an outline of how that process moves forward. And, you know, the first thing we have to do before we can issue an order describing a piece of property as hazardous or substandard, we have to somehow do some investigations, some inspections. I usually have a building inspector go out. We'll usually have the local fire chief go out, and both of them would do inspections. It's possible we'd have to have an appraiser go out and appraise the property. They might come up with an appraisal that says there is no value to the property, which then again would support our position of requesting that they, they raise or demolish the property. So there's some work that goes into that. Initially, a letter will go out asking that they give us consent to enter their property to do these investigations and/or appraisals. I have a feeling we're not going to get consent from many of them. And so at that point, then we will petition the court for an administrative warrant to go on to the property. We'll have to identify who's going to do that, when they're going to do that, what the purpose behind it is. We're going to have to show the court probable cause to believe that the property is hazardous and substandard. So that's how we're going to start. After that process is completed, the investigation, the due diligence, then we move from there to the actual issuance of an order. And that's where the council is going to come back in. You're going to review all the materials. You're going to review the photographs and the reports. And then you're going to issue an order. And then once that order is issued, again, we've got to serve notice on these people that, that we've declared this property to be substandard or hazardous. We send them notice. We give them, again, an opportunity to do the work themselves within a reasonable timeframe. We tell them that. The notice also indicates that if it's not done within that timeframe, then we are going to bring a motion in front of the court to enforce the order. And once that happens, then we'll, we go back to court. The court can approve the order that you've issued. The court can modify the order or amend it, whatever the court chooses to do. That order might specify the work that needs to be completed. It might specify that the property is of no value in its current condition and that the remedies or the repairs will add very little to the value, and therefore, we would ask that it would be demolished or removed. If they, like I said, do not act themselves, which typically they do not, I've done through this, I think about three times now in this, in one other community, then it will be up to the city to do something. You can either have your people do the work, or you have to go out for contracts, and there's possibly some contractual bidding requirements that are going to have to be complied with. Work is done, and accounting is kept of everything. And the city administrator will have to do that work. And then we have to report to the court again, go back to the court for another order approving that accounting. And then lastly, their, the lien process is like a special assessment process. We would, whatever funds we've expended to complete that work, that will then be assessed against that property. And so, some of these expenses that I've outlined, did you give them that sheet of paper?
Yep.
Okay, good. Are my best guess. And quite honestly, these things don't always go very smooth. There's usually a lot of bumps in the road. A lot of times, promises are made and, and the people don't follow through. So as I said, those are kind of my best guess. Some of these expenses that you're going to incur will be kind of flow-through type expenses. You may recover them at some point, but it'll probably be years down the road before the property is sold at sheriff's sale or whatever. In some properties, not all. And quite honestly, sometimes after you get their attention, you get some cooperation too. And then sometimes you can get some things accomplished. But you have to get their attention first. That's kind of the default process that I've outlined. There's also a contested process. After that order issues, the, it's served on the property owner and mortgage holder, tenants, any parties of interest. It's served upon them. And they then have 20 days to file an answer contesting the process. If they do that, that then is a contested matter and it, basically, it goes back into district court and all of the rules of the court and civil procedure would apply. That will be a much longer process. You're probably looking at eight to 18 months or thereabouts to complete that. And that could, you know, we go through discovery, we'll go through scheduling conferences and pre-trial conferences and possibly mediation, and then potentially to a trial. So that's, having ever gone that route, typically, it's, it's either a default or the property owner becomes cooperative and then we can sometimes get some things done. I think it's a good thing that the city is doing this. I think we have a lot of great neighborhoods in our community and people that take a lot of pride in their residences and the appearance of their residences. And I think this would, would be an affirmation to them that you're serious and that we want to, you know, keep the city looking good. In, in all, all developments. I mean, even the original town site of Sauk Center, it's, it's been around a while, but there's no reason why the, the homes there can't be well-maintained and taken care of. And most of them are, quite honestly. Questions?
Just one. If you have the same response within that 20-day period from morning, does this have to be a case by case or could they be presented to the court in a group?
They, they could, but they'll be case by case. But there would be some economies of scale if we are doing two or three properties and I have to schedule a, a motion hearing or, you know, something like that. I'll, I'll schedule them all together.
So then we would?
Yeah, they could, I would ask, they, they would all track on the calendar as, you know, almost like one case. They would be individual, but put all of the city of Sauk Center matters together in a block.
There was a few times that you mentioned reasonable amount of time. Who determines what a reasonable amount of time is? Because I've been, if you asked all five of us, we'd come up with a bit of different answer on that. So is there any?
Well, I, I think, you know, due process, it's, it's not scientific. It's kind of, it's more of an art form. It kind of depends on the situation and what we're looking at. But I would say, first of all, with securing the buildings, they get six days to respond. I think, I think seven to 10 days is sufficient. If they don't have, I mean, if you can't slap up some plywood on your windows or, you know, lock your doors or replace your broken glass in seven to 10 days, then we're going to do it for them.
Okay.
I don't think that's unreasonable. Now, as we move through the process, there'll be more time. We have some properties where back porches are falling down. You know, we're going to have to give them a little bit more time to do that, should they choose to do it themselves. But again, you know, some of these people have had a lot of time to address these problems. And we have documentation to that effect. So with that in mind, you know, my common sense approach tells me that shouldn't be a very long period of time either. They haven't demonstrated a willingness to do anything to date, so why should we give them another six months to get it done? And then in Minnesota, we have the issue of winter.
Right.
And so that, that poses a problem for some of this work.
Okay, thank you.
This may seem obvious, but what, how does it, how does a vacant building determine? I mean, what constitutes a vacant building?
I would say anything that's unoccupied, that's, that's, I would guess.
At any particular time? So if you're not home, I walk in and call it a vacant building? Or we?
No, I, I think, you know, it would be over a period of time. I couldn't tell you how long.
Has the court ever had, had an issue with that?
I do a lot of work for Tricap, for example. And we have people that will walk away from contract for deeds from time to time.
Right.
I mean, they walk out the door. As far as I'm concerned, that, that building is vacant.
Would it be fair to, to say, Tom?
That's one day.
Yeah.
But other buildings, I agree. If you haven't looked at them, if you don't know the owners of record, where they are, who they are, then I think you have to be very careful about declaring it to be vacant.
So there, so I guess that, you know, we have, you have definitions of securing a vacant building and all so on, and just that process of at what point do we then declare this to be vacant? And then what is the other aspect of somebody who's just a terrible housekeeper? I mean, are, are we relying on other ordinances then? If somebody has a dilapidated porch, is that an issue of public safety or personal choice?
Good question. I would say in some cases, it's a hazardous building if it's open. If it's potentially going to fall in, if the roof is going to fall in on somebody or something, I would call that a hazardous building. But that's why we have, that's why we do an investigation, that's why we do an appraisal. The appraisal is very important to the process.
I mean, I could see someone being away for a long period of time, coming back and living in a place that maybe you and I would never care to be in, but that's their home. And I can see where the constitution obviously comes into play in that part, and the court's going to be somewhat on the side of, I mean, that's where the, obviously where the due diligence is going to come into play.
Exactly.
To establish that.
I agree. If we look at, you know, just one set of facts, this property has been unoccupied for 10 days. Does that mean it's vacant, been abandoned? Not necessarily, but we have a lot of history on these properties. And the other thing is part of the due process, they're going to get notice. So at that point, then the ball is in their court. They need to respond. No, this is not a vacant building. Well, then tell us why are the windows broken and nobody's in it? And the doors are open?
And I understand that. And, and, you know, part of me also says, well, windows broken, wrong color paint on the house, I don't like the way you're shingled it. It's, where's that, where's that line at? Where's that line at? And how do you play that?
Mike, we've never talked about the wrong color shingles.
Well, but I know, but I mean, you understand what I'm getting at.
At this point, we're just talking about broken windows, doors adjourned, foundations that are wide open, critters are going in. That's what we're dealing with at this point. And then in terms of the hazardous buildings, that might be a whole different issue. But vacant, I, I think we just, we have a lot of history on these buildings.
So I guess so that, then that determined, then part of it is the history buildup of determining if we're going to proceed with, and in that period of time where that history is built up, is there something on behalf on the city to take action to notify? So if, if to notify homeowners of impending action, is that part of that process? Or is it, it's like, we've, we've noticed your house is really dilapidated for the last six months, and now we're going to begin procedures? Or we'll be talking about notice and then maybe that's what you're talking about, certified mail and those kind of things?
That's exactly what it is.
We've always had that process.
Right.
I understand that, but I, but again, I'm.
I think if you would ask Sarah, she's probably been in contact with most of these property owners at some time. And, and some of them live out of state. I've done mailings to Missouri and other places where these people live. These properties are abandoned.
And, and the other thing would be utilities. I know if the utilities have been, I mean, obviously, we provide utility services in this community and we know if there's no utility's been hooked up for a length period of time. Our, our police chief probably has been there potentially due to a reason or two. And then certainly, I know Sarah, on all the properties that we're, we've specified and we have been discussing tonight, there is a, there's a mountain of paperwork.
Well, don't, don't confuse what we're talking about tonight with the definition of vacancy. And that's what I, that's what I'm looking for, and that's what seems to be missing at this point.
I don't think it's missing, Mike, at all. I think it was outlined very well.
Well, no, no, as we, as we talk about, I, I don't see anything in writing in, as we describe a vacant building. And that's the only thing I, I'm looking for at this point.
Anybody else have any questions?
I looked at the statute looking for a definition, and I did not, I did not see one.
Interesting. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
In terms of what, what is vacant? Securing vacant buildings, definition. City, neighborhood association, secure. Those are the only three words that are defined. So we use our best judgment. You know, if somebody goes south for six months, that's not a vacant building. Of course, we don't have a problem with them. They shovel their sidewalks and they keep their property up. So we've pretty much focused in on the properties that are a problem.
I understand it. And my, my criticisms are not in regards to what we've done so far. It's just from the standpoint of that if we are going to institute a process by which we're going to declare buildings vacant, it seems reasonable, in my thought, to also determine, define what vacancy is. Whether it's in statute or not, maybe we need to kind of take a look at that and say, we're going to determine a vacant building in X, Y, Z are the processes by which we're going to do that. And once we hit that threshold, then we're going to move forward. That's all I'm looking for.
I don't know what definition you'd come up with, but I think we're well beyond that already.
That's probably something kept deliberately vague.
Well, then in a way, I'm, you know, that makes me a little nervous.
Mike, we're going to give them due process.
Right.
That's, they are, they're going to get more than they want.
I understand.
They're going to get more than she would like to get. I shouldn't say that, but. I insist on it. When I go in front of the judge, you know, we do how many mailings to some of these people? I'd rather have five mailings than one. And, and when you go in with that kind of information, you're usually pretty successful. So they will get a lot of notices and a lot of due process.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? No? Thank you, Tom. All right, we'll move into our action items this evening. Action item 7A, approving step adjustments. Vicki?
This is for non-union step adjustments. Our non-union employees, they're eligible for step following review and recommendation. We have three non-union employees eligible for advancement at various times in, actually in July and August, and I brought it before the meeting today. First is Brian Fredericks. He originally was hired with the city of Sauk Center on April 27th, 1989. He was promoted to the chief of police on August 2nd, 2008. At that time, he was put on a new step scale or a non-union, of which now he is placed to advance to step six on 8-2 of 2019. to advance to step six on 8-2 of 2013. The second is Nikki Vogt. She was hired on October 3rd, 2005. She had a date of a grade adjustment on August 2nd, 2009. She will step to a, step seven. Step seven is the top step on the non-union scale, effective 8-2 of 2013. The third is Wendy Drabney. She was actually hired as a temp on 8-1 of 2005. She was put in a full-time position on July 5th of 2007. So she will also advance to step six, and that would be on July 5th of 2013. I brought the three of them together as one action for the city council tonight. Part of the things that goes through that is I complete a review. For Chief Fredericks, I actually talked to people outside of the city, Janelle Kendall from the county attorney's office, et cetera, that work more directly with him. For the other two, Nicole Vogt and Wendy Drabney, I work with them every day, so I do those reviews myself. In, in a situation like when we did Sarah Morton, because she goes to the planning commission, I reviewed with the planning commission chair. So we kind of have a, kind of a procedure that we go through. And at the end, we set some kind of milestones that we want to reach in the following year, and next year we come by and we see if we got there. And a couple of the things that we are looking for next year between the three of them is getting some more, adding responsibility, requesting some more responsibility, the whole social media, getting the social media up and running correctly, being utilized more by supervisors and coworkers, getting more digitizing, more technology. We have our new scanners coming, those kinds of things. So, we see some upgrades to the things, the way we do business, you know, personal goals. And of course, then we have city goals, we'd like, some of them would like to see, we'd like to see the splash pad be a reality, and see some other things that we'd like to see the city do. So, kind of, kind of a short, in the nutshell type of way we go through the process. And so we are recommending, or I am recommending, that the advancements be approved for Brian Fredericks, Nicole Vogt, and Wendy Drabney, as outlined on the dates that are outlined in there as well.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the step advancements for Brian Fredericks, Nicole Vogt, and Wendy Drabney, as outlined above?
So moved.
We have a motion by...
Warren.
Warren, sorry, Warren. Is there a second?
Second. By Dave. Maybe you want to turn that nameplate around, you'll be a better...
It was there, I just couldn't get it off. Sorry, guys. We have, we wrote Keith down. We have a motion by Warren and seconded by Dave. Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Abstentions. Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Thank you. Moving on to action item B, approves pay request number six for RL Larson Excavating.
This is payment approval six. This is for the Fourth Street project. This is actually the first payment approval of 2013 for the work that they've done this spring. I did include a copy of the payment voucher for you. This pay request is for $691,015.40. The work completed to date over the two years of the project is $2,129,270.93. So the payments to date after this payment will be $2,022,807.38. So those are some good numbers. The difference between the work completed and the payments to date will be the retainage that we hold for a certain period of time until the project is finalized. So the request tonight is to approve payment voucher number six in the amount of $691,015.40.
Any questions of staff? Any none? Is there a motion to approve the payment voucher number six in the amount of $691,015.40?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Keith? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Warren? Any discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Abstentions. Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Moving on, action 7C, approve resolution 2013-39, authorizing sale of excess vehicles. Vicki?
At the June 5th council meeting, the city council approved advertising three Public Works vehicles for sale through the Department of Administration website. They were offered for sale, and the bids closed yesterday afternoon. The three vehicles we sold were the 1989 Chevy Cheyenne for $14.85, the 1984 F-350 was for $55.50, and the 1981 F-700 for $4,000, for a total of $11,035. So we're requesting to approve resolution 2013-39, authorizing the sale of the vehicles.
Okay, just a comment. I know we had minimum bids on all three of these, and all three of them met their minimum bids. There was a minimum bid of 4,000 on each of the two dump boxes, and I believe 1,000 on the...
Correct.
On the trucks. So, actually, some of these came in over, so it's great to see that we at least met our minimums and plus some. Is there any questions of staff? Call for motion, is there a approve, resolution 2013-39, authorizing the sale of the city vehicles?
So moved.
Motion by Keith? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave? Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Abstentions. Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Moving on to D, approve resolution 2013-40, amending the fee schedule. Vicki?
At the park board meeting on June 4th, the board recommended that the city council amend the fee schedule for campground reservations for stays after Labor Day. Typically, after Labor Day, it's about a 25% reduction in the regular rate. The current fee schedule has a rate of $20.62 for the day and $101.25 for the week as an after Labor Day rate. The park board is recommending that be changed to an even $20 and an even $100 per week, or for the $100 for the week. And so I have in front of you a resolution 2013-40, amending the fee schedule for after Labor Day camping rates.
Any questions?
I'm curious, why such a small reduction?
They just wanted to, for the, for the campground managers to have an even number.
Should we do that year round, so we don't tax them?
No, the tax is included.
No, I mean, if it, is it need to be rounded down to the whole year? I mean, is this a problem for, from...
No.
Memorial labor? That we need to reduce it after Labor?
When we did the, when, the last time when we amended the fee schedule for, during the regular season, we approved that, and then this was just a percent of that, and that's why it became an odd number. So we're just, we're just rounding down that number. When we go, now, the park board will be looking at campground reservation fees for 2014 in the coming months. And at that time, when they look at those, if they do an increase, then we'll make sure that the after Labor Day rate is an even number. It just makes it easier for the campground managers and for the people that are paying, and for that Visa card machine that we have, that we have even numbers.
So, what's the point of the 20, typically after Labor Day, there is a 25% reduction from the regular rate. What's that got to do with this?
Why do we have a reduced rate after Labor Day? Just to encourage more people to come after Labor Day?
So that dollar's going to make more people come and camp?
It's, I can't say for sure whether they came because it's a reduced rate or not. It's just...
Okay.
There's a lot of campgrounds out there that do a reduction after Labor Day, they have a total of separate...
Well, then, maybe in that case, we want to reduce it quite a bit more. I mean, if we're looking to track business, but reducing it a dollar over a complete week, I'm not sure.
I don't think we're actually...
It's 25% down now, plus a dollar. I mean, we're really just rounding it off.
We're just rounding it off. This isn't, you know, it's not the fact that we're reducing it a few cents or a few dollars, it's just to be, have an even number for the ease of accounting at the campground.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the reduction in usage, it's just to make it easier for accounting?
Correct.
Okay.
The rate that's prior to the Labor Day rate, they took a percentage of that, reduced it after Labor Day, and that percentage came to an odd number, so they're trying to even that percentage out to get it to an even number, basically.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve resolution 2013-40, amending the fee schedule for after Labor Day camping rates?
So moved.
Motion by Keith?
Second.
Second by Dave? Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Abstentions. Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Okay, moving on to E, approve resolution, excuse me, approve amendment to reservation policy for campground.
Again, at the June 4th park board meeting, the park board acted on a recommendation of the campground attendants to establish a minimum three-day stay for holiday stays. To, then the holidays would be Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. And so the park board is recommending that the reservation be amended to establish this minimum. And I did include a copy of the reservation policy in your packet, and the part that's underlined and, and in italics there in the middle, that is the recommended amendment. So our action requested is to amend the reservation policy to establish a three-day minimum stay for Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day.
Well, if you can't stay for three days...
Are we selling out all the time, or what's the deal?
Yeah.
So, is there, did they look at the possibility of putting a premium on a single day as opposed to three days? So, I mean, it, it seems like if you can't stay three days and you want to go out, you should have that opportunity.
Well, you'd have the opportunity, you'd just still have to pay for the third day. I mean, it's kind of like hotels and some other, or vacation destinations, they will have a minimum-length stay. And so that's what we're saying on these three holiday weekends, because what will happen is they'll come in for two days, and then it sits empty for a day, when, you know...
How often is that happening?
It happens quite often.
Basically, every holiday.
Well, how much?
We have people come in for one night, well, now, after that first day of the holiday weekend, now, they leave after one night, now it sits vacant for two more nights, and we're losing revenue.
And my question is, how much is that happening?
Well, we have the reservation books, but I don't have the numbers in front of me right now. I mean, we can certainly dig it out for you.
Seems kind of camper-friendly.
Yeah.
Well, it's basically, all the camping that I do, every one of them on a holiday weekend does it. We're, this isn't out of the normal. And anyone that camps, a...
Well, it should be. People can't stay there, in my opinion.
Well, most of the time, if you don't can't, if you don't want to stay there the full three nights, you just, they go camping someplace else.
Camp, they're all like this.
Yeah, you just said they were all like this.
Most of them are.
So, what if they, what if they had a premium for a single night that's equivalent to a night and a half?
They, when they do their fee schedule, that was something we should put on it for them to look at.
Right.
It's an option.
Okay. So, right now, we're looking at amending the policy to establish a three-day minimum stay for Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day for this year, if we want to look at adjusting the fee schedules on a premium for one night or two nights. We would do that at the time that we look at the fee schedules for 2014. This fall would definitely be an option. I, I agree with Warren, I camp as well some, and I almost find every campground, not even the holidays, are actually requiring three days, some of the ones that we've gone to. So, I think it is becoming more common, definitely on these, of these, these holidays. I do know if we have only one night, and most people that are reserving these specific weekends, and most weekends have done that far in advance, maybe a year in advance in some cases, so they already know if they're going to, you know...
Yeah.
If it's three days, they know it's three days or not. So, I think they, they plan for that, but... Very good. Is there...
I have a different question.
Yes?
I'm curious about how we're defining the Independence Day weekend.
We talked about that at the park board a little bit, and at the Independence Day, if it's Friday, of course, it's that weekend. If it's Monday, it's that weekend. Tuesday, Independence Day weekend is considered before. It's only Wednesday that, that becomes problematic.
Okay, and that would be this year, right?
Yeah.
I'm curious. That made me wonder exactly how you define that weekend.
Well, this year, Independence Day is long reserved, so we don't have to worry about it this year.
I'm sure it is, but I didn't see a definition anyplace, and people are going to be...
When that came up at the park board, the park board said we'll, we'll handle Independence Day, they'll, they'll be able to handle that on a case-by-case. So, I'm not quite sure what that meant.
So, so on any given year, we might just specify what constitutes the Independence Day weekend this year?
Right.
We could do that as well.
Before we go into the reservation, before we go into the reservation season on the first of the year, they'll know ahead of time.
Okay.
So, really, this motion is just for Labor Day?
And Memorial Day, and Independence, well, going this year...
You're talking this calendar, right?
No, no, this is our policy, this is our permanent policy that goes on.
But this...
The fee schedule was just for this year.
Right.
Now, we don't, we don't change the policy every year, just when we, you know, we choose to amend it.
So, then, his question in regards to Labor Day, or 4th of July, how is that in this policy, addressed in this policy we're talking about before us now?
It's not, but it's not an issue because we're completely booked already.
I understand that, but as we go forward, where we're not completely booked, how are we going to then determine?
And the park board is going to determine, based on what day of the week it follows, what that is, before we go into the reservation season.
It'll still be a three-day stay.
It'll still be a three-day stay, but on January 2nd, when we open reservations, by that time, we will know what day it is.
I think the follow-up to that is, I don't have a problem with the park board doing that. Are they allowed to do that, or are we going to be having them come with the schedule every year to be approved for which weekend is the 4th this year? Or is that within their prerogative to set that schedule every year?
I believe it's within their authority.
That's good enough for me.
Okay.
All right. Otherwise, it would need to be noted within the resolution if that's the case, but I think it is within their authority. They do that today, right? They set the schedules. Okay. Any other questions? No other questions of staff? Is there a motion based on the recommendation by staff to amend a reservation policy to establish a three-day minimum stay for Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Warren? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave? Is there any discussion? Any questions? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three in favor, two against.
As, as a side note, I received a letter in the mail yesterday with the glowing accolades for our new campground attendance. So I thought that was very good.
Is it cousin?
Moving on to F, approved resolution 2013-41 approving grant with Mindot Aeronautics. Vicki.
This goes back to the, the airport and our, our upgrade plans and everything that we've been going through with the MPEG meetings, and when we're looking through the capital improvement plan for the airport, the airport board discussed the proposed renovations to the arrival and departure building, and they concur that a new building would not be cost-effective, and to even put that on the capital improvement plan that we're working on. And so, as an alternative to that, they said the existing building could definitely use a facelift based on the surveys that we had, and that I think you guys were provided with some of that information previously. So we contacted Mindot Aeronautics, and they approved moving forward with a 70%, 30% grant. So we've obtained estimates for the project, and you see there was paint, tile, bathroom fixtures, water softener, carpet, window treatments, light fixtures, furniture. We have a snooze room there, that's one of the things we have to have for an airport, and the sidewalk entrance and some things like the bulletin board and the clock, et cetera. I did have a, we did have, these are all local contractors that we secured the quotes from, and then anything over $2,000, we have to send down from Mindot so they can look at, at the two lowest quotes. We have an estimated cost of $11,323.20 with the city share at $33,9696, which would be paid solely through the airport funds. Additionally, the roof and fascia are being repaired due to hail damage, so that was a little side deal. But the one thing about the $33,96, why the airport board feels that this is doable for them this year is because they had budgeted to go LED on the beacon, and then we were able to get in, in Mindot's Go Green initiative, and we were able to get the beacon lights and everything at no cost, so that freed up these dollars, and they thought if we leveraged the Mindot Aeronautics dollars, we could facelift that building. So what we're looking for tonight is for a resolution 2013-41 authorizing us to enter into a grant agreement with Mindot Aeronautics for this improvement.
I'll make that motion.
Hold on, let me see if there's any questions. Is there any questions of, of staff in regards to this? Is, who represents the council? Do you have anything, Mike, if you're involved with any of this, any thoughts?
Uh, no, not at this point.
Okay, very good. With that, no questions of staff, I believe Warren, you entertain a motion to approve resolution 2013-41 authorizing entry into a grant agreement with Aeronautics, Mindot Aeronautics.
Yep.
Motion by Warren, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? Any questions?
So this, this money is already, because of the beacon, if no expense on the beacon, this money is already here.
This money is going to be, rather than spending it on the beacon, we're going to spend it on the building.
Okay.
It's been budgeted, and it's in the, in the budget cycle for this year, so, all right. That, I'll call the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries, four in favor, one against. Okay. Moving on to G, approve resolution 2013-42, 45, 46, 47, 48, and 49 directing vacant homes to be secured. Vicki.
I think Mr. Mayor and City Attorney explained this whole process for securing the vacant homes in the first part of his presentation quite clearly, so I don't know if I need to add anything additional, although you have the resolution, the report, and all the pictures, or the pictures relative to the broken windows and doors and openings, et cetera, that we are proposing to secure. And like Mr. Mayor said, some of these, these files go back four, five, six years that we've worked on these properties, some have been vacant for many years, they're gutted. It's just, it's time, I think, I think the other staff agrees with me that it's time that we move forward and on these, because it's very difficult to, to keep taking calls from the neighbors, and that we're not doing anything.
So, if I could just outline to summary, Vicki, as City Attorney Tom Meyer talked about, we have established several homes that we have been working on for years, not months, but years, and at this point, we are just looking to move forward with the resolution requiring them to, for the facilities and addresses to be secured. If it doesn't complete the work within 10 days, the city will secure the home, which may include covering the broken windows or doors or holes with plywood sheets. The Act of Securing the Home will not prevent the city from taking further action underneath the Hazardous Substandard Buildings Act, which could ultimately lead to demolition of the home if it's not repaired to its standard. The addresses that we are, have been discussed is 625 Getty Street, 1034 Getty Street, 518 Elm Street South, 331 Maple Street, 200 Ave. Street North, 332 Birch Street North, 524 Hickman Drive, 200 Second Street South, and 926 Sinclair Lewis Avenue. All of these addresses will be getting the notice based on this resolution. Is there any discussion?
What kind of costs are we budgeting for this action in regards to, once we, we start securing these buildings?
As far as securing the homes, the securing the homes part of it is going to be, you know, the cost of some plywood, so there won't be a lot of cost in this action with the securing the homes. As we move forward with the Hazardous and Substandard Building Act that he outlined, then there'd definitely be a budget discussion, that the cost to us for doing this part of it is minimal.
Who's doing the labor?
We would have our public works crew do it.
Are we not accounting for that cost, then?
Well, we would, but it wouldn't be additional cost than what the city's already spending, it would be allocated to that, which we may eventually recover those costs. But we're already paying their wages, so it's not like we're going to pay an extra.
I understand, I'm just making sure that it's not just a piece of plywood, it's also a couple guys putting it up, so...
Yeah, there will be some material and some labor of our in-house labor and material that will be, which will be tracked, as discussed earlier, per residence, but you're right, Dave, there's time and there's material costs that will be allocated to begin this project.
So do we have a number? No?
Not for this specific...
Yeah, they're going to vary all over the place, and some of them will do it themselves, perhaps, so...
Well, we've got a lot of research on these pieces, so I thought maybe we might have an idea about what we're going to spend.
The need that we have.
I have another question.
Yep.
It says that you're going to be doing this by a certified letter, and we already had a little, a little talk from the...
Correct, we'll be certified in first class.
Okay, it doesn't say that here.
No, because the first class was something I just learned tonight.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying that, because that's not here.
Can you add that to this resolution?
I will.
Okay, I think it's important, yeah.
And it needs to accurately reflect, because if they don't take certificate, the certified mail, that's what we've defined, well, and they haven't served, so...
Absolutely. Any other questions? Is there a motion? No other questions? Sorry?
I will make a motion that we approve all this list of resolutions with the change being made for the regular mail addition.
Yeah, I will second it.
We have a motion by Dave, and a second by Warren. Is there any further discussion? I'll call the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, one against. Moving on to H, approve resolution 2013-44 amending lease agreement with CentraCare.
The lease agreement that we do have with CentraCare Health Systems, Sock Center, it calls for a monthly rent to the city, it can be amended from time to time by the city, and with CentraCare, and with the concurrence of CentraCare who met today, it is recommended the annual rent under Section 1.03A subdivision 2 of the lease be amended effective July 1st to $45,000 per month. And I have put that out in a resolution format for you, Resolution 2013-44 amending the rent, it's actually a monthly rent payment with CentraCare Health Systems, Sock Center.
Any questions?
What was the rent?
It was 35.
Okay, so it's going from 35 to 45?
Correct.
Who initiated it?
CentraCare.
CentraCare wanted to spend more money here, huh?
Well, it, it's all tied to costs for us and for them.
Okay.
It's free lunch, all right.
Any other questions? None, is there a motion then to approve resolution 2013-44 amending the annual rent payment with CentraCare Health Systems and Sock Center?
So move.
Motion by Warren, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave?
You know, let me retract that, I think, because I think I'm just going to abstain anyway, so let's, let's let somebody else second that.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second? Mike, you want a second?
I don't know, I'm thinking about it, it's kind of funny.
All right, the chair...
I'll second.
All right, seconded by, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? I'll call the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries, three in favor, none against, two abstentions.
There's going to be some pretty good votes coming up, I like this.
All right. Moving on to unfinished business, we are at the point where Vicki's going to give us an update on the 2013 project.
Okay, we have the phase one part of it and the phase two part of it, and Keith gave you a pretty in-depth one, so I'll just kind of touch on some of the unfinished business. You know, that they had the issue with the stump in the boulevard down on Fourth and, and, Fourth and Birch, I think it was, and that actually finally got ground out yesterday, so they were able to restore that for that gentleman down there. We have the issue of the CenturyLink vault that is on Fourth Street, and that's between Main and Pine, and the city engineer is actually working with CenturyLink on that. Brush pile and debris by the pond, that's still going to be taken out of there, so if anybody's listening, we're still getting rid of that pond. And then we had an issue with a sidewalk that was cracked by some large equipment that we'll be repairing, that's up here on Fourth and Maple. And we also had a semi turned in the parking lot, in the new parking lot behind City Hall to back up to, and put a big rut in, as they turned. And yesterday, when it was good and hot out there, the guys went out there with some shovels and our roller, and they did a pretty good job of putting it back where it belongs. You know, it doesn't look like the brand-new pavement, but it's smooth, so that's, that's good that they were able to catch that right away and repair that. As far as phase two of the project, which is the part going this way, the underground, you know, of course, our underground was all done, we were waiting for CenturyLink, and CenturyLink now completed all theirs, and they were out of here actually over a week ago. But in the meantime, the excavators had left town from RLRS, and they had them on another job, and they're scheduled to come back tomorrow, so that was the discussion of what happened to everybody. We're waiting for the excavators to come back to bring the fill, to bring the road up to grade, soon as it's up to grade, the curb's going to go in, and the driveway aprons, and then they'll start laying some sidewalk, and we will be, they were scheduled to start curb on next week, but that'll probably be out a week because of the dirt, and then they were speculating to pave maybe the week of the fourth, and we're not too sure, we'll have them in here doing that, because we usually have a lot of traffic that week. So somewhere, the first half of July, though, they should be in, and they should be putting that full first lift all the way up to Eighth Street, so that will be good. Again, a couple sidewalk damages and some small things, and some trees and different things, but we're taking care of those as we go. We did get the wiring underground under the curbs and everything that's going to the streetlights that are going to go back in, and then we're just dealing individually with property owners on their, their sidewalk approaches and mailboxes and those kinds of things, but it's actually going pretty well. I, I agree that it appeared to be at a standstill all week and some of last week, and in reality, it kind of was, and so, when the, when the excavators get back here tomorrow, we'll see a lot of, lot of activity again, so...
All right, any questions? None?
Just one, just for the public's knowledge, when was the final end date of the project?
They were supposed to be complete, actually, the final end date is October 25th.
Right.
And, except for the final lift next year, but we're going to be months ahead of that.
Right, so basically, even though it looks like we're at a standstill, we're still months ahead of schedule.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Vicki, for the progress report, for the construction going on in town, we have no new business this evening, we have our consent agenda.
I did have an add to the claims.
Yep.
An add of $74,000, that was for the Freightliner truck, the chassis, he neglected to mail the invoice, and so we neglected to pay the bill. And so, the schedule of claims of unpaid actually is $210,640.61, with the paid claims of $77,9472, for a total of $218,435.33, so that's exactly the $74,000 increase. Brad, if you wanted to go through the rest of them, or if you want me to?
I, I can go through them. Moving on then to our May checks of check number 1864E through 1899E, and 033894 through 033999, as well as four payroll ACHs, for a total of $400,302.20. We also have a resolution 2013-43 accepting contributions, contribution totaling $700 from Dale and Carol Emel to be used to the Sock Center Fire Department Equipment Fund, I want to make, thank them specifically for that donation. Also, we have a request from Tina Roddy, doing business as Mustang Bar, and Eric Kellerman doing business as the Nextdoor Bar and Lounge LLC, for a temporary extension of premise permit for a fundraising benefit for Kenny Steffen on July 21st of 2013. We also have a request from Eric Kellerman, doing business as the Nextdoor Bar and Lounge, for a temporary extension of premise permit for a fourth anniversary party on August 10th of 2013, and a gambling application for exempt permit request from Knights of Columbus, 4863 for bingo on August 1st through the 4th at the Stearns County Fair. That is our consent agenda this evening. Staff, anything else? Did I miss anything? We got it, all right. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Would that change?
You're going to call for questions?
Yeah.
I just have one question.
Questions?
Yeah, and it's, it's pretty minor, but the second thing on the schedule of claims are Burnex parts and labor to repair can vendor, isn't that part of their contract?
No, a couple years ago, when they discontinued having cans and only went to bottles, then we became the new owners of the vending machines, and we, so we still have to pay for the repairs.
Thanks.
A question in the temporary extension of outdoor liquor permit applications. Of everything that's listed on these applications, what are the items that would cause a denial of an application? Are there things on here? I mean, there's some information that's nice to know, and then there are things that would say, if you're not doing this, you don't get it. Are there things on here?
Well, they don't, they don't get it with, well, the requirements are the things that were established by the city, these are all the things that you have to meet, or you won't get your permit. If you're looking at the application page?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, type and reason for event.
I mean, oh, type or reason, oh, the kind of reasons why we wouldn't have, wouldn't allow it?
No, no, my, my question is, we have all of this information that's on here, which is good, but as I look at this, I'm just curious in regards to what things on here, if are not there, would cause an application to be denied?
If they didn't provide proof of insurance?
Okay.
You know, any of those requirements?
So, under the dotted line are the ones that are...
Those are our requirements that we put on it.
Everything above is in regards...
Above is informational.
So, time of the event, she has noon to 7:00, if they go to 10 o'clock, that's just, oops, not a big deal.
Yeah, it is.
Well, then, so then...
Does the police know about it?
Well, that, that's, that's my point, I mean, I said, so it's beginning and ending of time of event, which is something that would cause an issue.
Right, if they, if they were outside those times, then they're not permitted to be there outside of their times, and they would be subject to a violation.
Okay.
And you're, you have the opportunity now to look at each one of these applications, and if you feel there's a time, or there's some specific requirement that we want, we used to do these, actually, Mike, one at each with a separate resolution, and we included them to the consent agenda, and that ain't the part, what I'm trying to say is, is you're right, that all the information above the requirements, it has to be filled out so that we know what the event is, and if we want, and we feel that the event, time might change, or anything in that event should change, now would be our time to make that...
Well, I understand, and, and, so I see type and reason for event.
Yep.
If they decide to do it for a different reason?
Yep.
Then all of a sudden, that's in violation of the permit?
Well, we're permitting it for this purpose, for these times, for this number of people.
How do we verify that? I know this is getting detailed, but I mean, it's just like, how do you verify that it's, that the Kenny Steffen bike run benefits from it? I mean, they say just about anything.
How do I know that they give the money to them?
It's unverifiable in some ways, we don't have the way to verify it.
It's not our responsibility.
So then, so then in a way, this becomes one thing that we don't care about, what the reason for it is.
Well, but we give a permit for that reason.
But we don't have any way of verifying that reason.
Well, we can look, we look at their posting, they posted a Kenny Steffen bike rally as, as their reason. Now, if we see posters that say they're having a rock concert, well, we can give a permit for that.
But they said it's for Kenny Steffen, though.
Well, that, that's fine.
But then again, how do you know it, it's actually getting to Kenny Steffen's bike rally?
That's not our responsibility, we issue a permit for that purpose.
Okay, all right.
It's outside our scope.
Well, I know, and so, then, then it becomes a reason, why is it even in here? Because we really can't verify.
Because it involves liquor.
So, is it ours, or is it the state's requirement?
The state writes the rules, and it's our responsibility to enforce them.
So the reason is, this is a state reason, then, not our necessarily reason?
The state requires the, if they're going to have liquor outdoors...
Yep.
Then we are responsible for regulating it, the state requires us to regulate it.
I understand that.
And that's why we're talking about it.
And I understand that, but I mean, again, type and reason for event isn't a state statute, it's just like, we put it in there and asked them to do that?
We created this document that provides us the information necessary to make a sound...
But we have no way to verify that.
Excuse me?
We don't have any way to really, to verify some of this information that's in here.
Well, I'm pretty sure you're welcome to go up there and make sure it's a bike run.
No, it's not up to me, this is an issue that we're talking about the city.
But you're, you're questioning not the reason for the event, but the benefit of the event, and we're not asking for the benefit.
No, no, not even that, no, I'm just talking about as a, as a process by which we are issuing this, and the information that we are asking for, and why are we asking for that information?
I don't think you really have to ask for anything, because there's only a limited number of times that they get.
Right, so then again, you really, type and reason for event, there's no action
to be taken in regards to that, they get so many, if they want to have puppy days, five in a row, that's their job, yeah, right, so, so it's not anything that would cause them to be, for us to take action either for, prior or after.
It helps us make a determination.
It's nice to know.
It's nice to know to help us make a determination when this application comes to us, whether or not it should be some...[1652.13]